Councilman DePorter, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm on the phone.
Nick, are you on the phone?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
We got him, yes, we can hear you. For the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Beth. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Leger. Thank you, and now we'll start with economic development and my report from the Economic Development Committee of the Maricopa Association of Governments. We had our first economic development meeting in Phoenix. First up on the agenda was the economic impact of the NCAA Final Four events. They amounted to the second highest attendance in history with 153,780 for the two sessions, 23 million viewers, 9.6 million livestream broadcasts to 176 countries. Great exposure for Arizona. The state has petitioned to hold the event here again next year. Second up on our agenda was an update of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. They report that they now service 1.4 million passengers per year, they employ 2,500 people, and contribute 1.3 billion to the local economy. The airport hopes to expand utilizing the 1,000 acres of developable land for both aeronautical and non-aeronautical uses. Interesting that they have a shortage of pilots for the smaller planes, so they're hoping to get the word out for those who are qualified to fly. Third on the agenda was a new medical foods prescription industry. The company Premus Pharmaceuticals is located in Scottsdale, and they offer food-grade medicines for chronic diseases instead of the alternative prescriptions of opiates. In looking at statistics for opioid use in the U.S., we are 5% of the global population yet have 80% opioid use. Blue Cross alone reports that 1 in 5 of their patients is on opioids. That's pretty scary statistics. Premus is trying to get the word out that there are alternatives to opioids for chronic diseases like arthritis, neuropathy, and fibromyalgia. And that is my EDC report. We will go on to our next item, recognition of the school resource officer, Maricopa County Sheriff's Deputy Jill Osher for her service to Fountain Hills. Grady?
Yes, Mayor and Council, and the audience who are here tonight, we've been very fortunate over the last seven years to have a dedicated sheriff's deputy who served as a school resource officer at Fountain Hills School System. She was dedicated, gave numerous hours, she was beloved by the students and the faculty. She played a really key role with the Fountain Hills Coalition, which is an organization that is in place to help combat drugs and alcohol of school-aged children. And she was very active with that organization, and that's where I got to know her as well. So with us tonight is Captain Hank Brandon Mart, and also Jill is also in the audience, I just don't see her right now.
She's not here.
There you are, Jill. So if you could just come up to the podium, please, and we'd like to really give you a big round of applause for all your service.[310.83][310.83](applause) And also Shelley Maury, who is the executive director of the Coalition. Is she here? I didn't see her when I came in.
She's out of town.
Okay.
But Maria's here, Maria.
Maria, could you please come up? You were designated to say a few words, I believe, on behalf of the Coalition.
I can't tell Jill.
Use the mic.
Everyone has.
Maria, could you come up and use the mic, so that everybody who's listening at home can hear?
I'm here because I wanted to be here, even though Shelley couldn't be here today, to thank Officer Jill for all her hard work, commitment, and dedication to our schools and our students. As Mr. Miller said, she's been an instrumental part of the Coalition, and it's a very difficult job to strike that balance between kids of all ages, middle and high school, liking you and respecting you. And Jill has fulfilled that role just wonderfully, and we're going to miss her. But we wish you the best, and we'll always be in touch, so you're always welcome to our sector meetings or anything we do.
Thank you, everyone. This is overwhelming, I feel like I went backwards or something, but anyway, I just want to thank everyone for the kind words and the support. It's been a great run, but I'm not leaving town, so that's the good news. I'll still be here supporting the town and the community, just as well as I did the schools. I just want to thank everyone so much. All right, thank you.[453.22][453.22](applause) And now we have another recognition tonight. This is recognition of Phyllis Kern and Kathy Martis for the Fourth at the Fountain fundraising efforts and continued support for the town of Fountain Hills. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, and the audience that are here tonight, we're very pleased to recognize these two individuals. Phyllis Kern, I guess she'd be on your right facing, in the red, and also Kathy Martis. These are two key individuals that partnered with the town on being able to put on our Fourth of July spectacular, the Fourth at the Fountain this year. But they haven't just done it this year, we've been working with this team for the last couple of years. Phyllis has been involved slightly longer, in fact, it was thanks to Phyllis who helped bring back the fireworks and the team that we had at the time. But these are incredible fundraisers, and I have to tell you, this is not a very cheap event that we put on. In fact, I believe Phyllis raised and Kathy approximately $35,000 for this event this year?
Thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, see, she's got it right on top of her head. So it...
The record is forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Yes. So the town has actually started budgeting for the fireworks for the last three years, and we could not do this event. This event has been a free event for the last two years for all of our residents. This year, we broke all records. In fact, we, thanks to their hard work and a committee that was involved and the town staff, we had approximately, we think, 15,000 to 20,000 people who came out for the fireworks. Not all of them were at the park, a lot of people were parked in the surrounding area, but we just could not have done this with them. As you can imagine, it's very hard for the town to ask for money from our merchants and businesses, and these two folks have a can-do attitude, and they absolutely were part of the team that made this happen. So let's hear it for them.[591.04][591.04](applause)
If you come around, we have certificates to show our appreciation, and this one is for Phyllis and for Kathy. And I just want to add that, you know, working with them day-to-day as they were trying to raise funds, you know, it's not easy, especially during hard times like when Phyllis first started with the very first Fourth of July that she brought back to us after being absent for so many years that we didn't have the fireworks. But just day-to-day, like, okay, here's the list, and who haven't we covered, and someone's promised, but they haven't paid yet, so now you've got to go back, and then you've got to send letters, and then you have to follow up with phone calls, and then you follow up, and eventually, it's like, oh no, Phyllis is here, let me write that check right now.[660.66][660.66](laughing) Yeah, I think we have a victim right here.[665.12][665.12](laughing) And our business community has been so incredibly generous, and I hope that bringing those 10,000 to 20,000 people in here and exposing their businesses to people from outside Fountain Hills is certainly going to benefit them, but at the same time, giving something back to the residents, free, come, family-friendly, and that's what it was all planned to be, and we couldn't have done it without the two of them. So you have our extreme thanks for everything, and we'll be calling you again next year.[702.43][702.43](laughing)[703.43][703.43](laughter) Would you like to say something?
I'd just like to add, when you have the mayor and the town council, especially Rachel and Gracie helping, it makes it easy, wouldn't you agree, Kathy?
Yeah, it really did. And I have to say that the new businesses and the old businesses stepped up. Thank God that this town has brought so many great businesses here that are willing to help. All right, well, congratulations again.[741.82][741.82](applause) All right, and the recognition list goes on. Recognition of Community Services Director Rachel Goodwin's recent Certified Public Manager Designation Achievement. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, tonight I'm pleased to formally recognize Community Services Director Rachel Goodwin. She recently became a Certified Public Manager back in June. She was also, at the time, juggling the job of interim Community Services Director along with her previous job, the Recreation Manager. This is a very intensive program. It is a 10-month program that involves 240 hours of classroom time as well as additional time spent on homework and assignments and projects. And Rachel just did this, obviously, it came probably pretty easy for her, but this is a very difficult and a very outstanding designation. There will only be 100 of these that were awarded by ASU this year, and she's the only person in our organization of the town of Fountain Hills that actually has a Certified Public Manager Designation. So this is a pretty big deal, we're honored to have her on staff, and she learned quite a bit. In fact, this is such an intensive program that ASU, if you decide to go on and earn a master's, will award up to six units towards the 42-unit program. So this is a very intensive, very highly-recognized program and very coveted certification. So if I can have Rachel come up to the podium, so everybody can get a look at you, and let's
Rachel, would you like to say a few words?
You're kind of obligated now.[906.62][906.62](laughing)
I just want to thank Grady for supporting this process and making schedule adjustments to make sure that I could be part of class, and not just the online program, but really take time to meet people as part of this program and really network, and it has been amazing, and I really appreciate your support too, Grady.
Thank you.
All right.
Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere.[927.56][927.56](applause)
And Grace, if you can come up as well, please.
I will.
Do you have the awards with you, too? So we're very pleased, in addition to recognizing Rachel for her Certified Public Manager Designation, due to the hard work of our Communications Marketing Coordinator, Grace Rodman Gutter. And, sorry, I always get the last name mixed up.
That's Gutter, isn't it?
I apologize that it's very Dutch.
No, it's okay, it's okay. And along with Rachel's efforts, we recently had the staff attend a conference, Arizona Office of Tourism, and we received the 2017 Governor's Tourism Award from the Arizona Office of Tourism for Outstanding Marketing Campaign for the Get Out of the Valley and Into the Hills Initiative. So this is a pretty big deal. There's not too many organizations that compete for this, and we actually won this award. And was this for our size community? Was there a split, or was this... Could you tell us a little bit about the award?
Yeah, the award is given by the state, by the Office of Tourism, under the Governor's Office. So they divide communities into a rural or urban format. Because we are part of Maricopa County, we fall into an urban format, even though I don't necessarily know that we're super urban, but we do... So we are against the likes of Scottsdale and Mesa and Tempe and the Glendale's of the counties, so it was a big feat for us to go toe-to-toe with them and bring home this award.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.[1033.25][1033.25](applause)
I just want to add my congratulations, and the congratulations of the council for this great award for what you've done for Fountain Hills. This is just a testament to how... It's a recognition of all that you've done. We've recognized what a great job you've done, but now the governor knows.[1057.06][1057.06](laughter)
Well, I want to thank the council and Rachel, she's been such a phenomenal mentor on this journey. I have a tourism background, but, you know, Rachel pushes me, and this has been incredible, and, well, this is just another reason to get out of the valley and into the hills.[1092.16][1092.16](applause)
Okay, thanks again. Okay, now we go to call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards? Mayor, we have five cards. Okay. Kathy Florence, followed by Jana Hambrunch. Kathy Florence. Okay, can I ask everybody to turn their cellphones off, please? Put them on vibrate. And just as a reminder, call to the public is on a topic that is not on the agenda today, and anyone who comes up to speak, just give your name and your town, do not give your street address, and you have three minutes. So when you see this little light turn red, that means you have to stop. That gives everybody ample time to talk and gives us time to get on with the rest of the agenda. Okay, welcome.
My name is Kathy Florence, I'm a tenure resident of Fountain Hills, and I sent an email to the mayor and each council member in June, and I'm concerned, because I didn't get a response from anyone, so I'm just asking a question. Could someone check into seeing whether the information on the website is correct? Because I'm sure others have questions, and so my request is that someone check into it and make sure all of the contact information is correct.
Oh, okay. And while we can't answer for something like that, Grady makes a note, and...
And I apologize, I didn't get the full name. Beth, did you get it?
Kathy Florence.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
And we have her contact information, okay. Jana Hambrunch, and then Susan Fallon.
Hello, Council. I'm actually here, my name is Jana Hambrock, I'm a Fountain Hills resident for over five years, and I apologize, because I have not been here, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to meet everybody. I love what you do. I'm on 10 boards across the U.S., and I fight for kids and workforce, NEDC, if you saw my little message there. We have to collaborate, and I know you guys do, and your time and what you do, I don't know if everybody realizes how much time and what it takes to do what you do. It's not an easy job, it's a thankless job. I said the same thing at the school board, I went to one of their meetings a couple months ago. But I have to tell you that we have to come together if we want to build this community. We have to come together and look at our education. You just applauded this wonderful woman for what she did, and had a certification. We are providing that certification to high schools and middle schools across the U.S., and ASU knows that, by the way, I work with them a lot, I have a contract to take care of their certs. We do this all over the world. Why are we not putting technology and digital literacy at that level in our community? This council has to be prominent and be very vocal to our school board and our members and all these people here. We are not going... We want to build all these wonderful, beautiful things and bring capacity into the town. You're not going to do it, because you can't get funding if you don't have kids here to go into the workforce. We have to bridge the skills gap. How do you do it if we don't collaborate? EDC workforce education has to be one unit, not five different arms with different messages. I know everybody says all kinds of things, and they don't understand the issues with budgets, and I get it. I've written multimillion-dollar grants in Florida, I changed the state policy in Florida for DOE, I work with Workforce Florida, Career Source now, Alaska. I'm in states all over, and I'm telling you, I see the same issues, but when they come together, you guys are actually the biggest piece. The town council has to be prominent at that school education environment. These kids have to have technology, they have to. Digital literacy, cybersecurity, data analytics, we are in a 21st century global environment. This is not just about living in Fountain Hills. Though we can make them live here and work online, we can make them live here and pay taxes and grow and bring businesses, but you're not going to bring business, from an EDC perspective, if you don't provide the correct and proper education. And we're afraid to do it. And I think art schools are fabulous. I think the teachers give their hearts to these kids. It's not an easy environment. Believe me, I've been administrator of a school district for seven years in Florida and a director of the state university, I'm telling you, it's not easy. But the fact is that we have to support them, we have to write grants, we have to know what is current and emerging. Right now, there's nothing that I see anywhere written that talks about technology within the schools, within the company, within anything within this town. Thank you very much. Is that over, or are we fleshing out? Yes? Thank you.
Thank you.[1414.03][1414.03](applause) Susan Fallon, Jean Michael Isaac.
Susan Fallon, 15-year resident of Fountain Hills. I was last before the council the beginning of June, along with Diane Poston, attorney for Secular Coalition for Arizona. We are supporting resident Mark Forster, resident of Fountain Hills, who objected to the mayor's proclamation, annual proclamation supporting a Fountain Hills Day of Prayer, and to the use of town resources and taxpayer funds to promote this event. A detailed letter with the objection and the legal precedent behind it was sent to each member of the council and to the mayor on April 30, 2017. Despite our appearance in front of the council the 1st of June, we still have yet to hear anything. As you know, we feel that this activity contravenes both the U.S. Constitution and the Arizona Constitution, not only violating the civil rights of nonbelievers, but of people of faith who don't happen to be Christians. So I would ask you once again, please respond, and I'd like to confine the rest of my comments today to discussing this issue of non-response, because it's been my experience, and in talking with other residents, the town council seems to have a fairly solid but unfortunate track record of simply ignoring anyone with whom you disagree, even when the issues such as church-state separation are significant. Recent examples of that include a request, I believe by the Democratic Party, that the town take a position on the U.S. withdrawal from the Paris Climate Accord, certainly a weighty issue, completely ignored. Scottsdale, by the way, replied, but not Fountain Hills. Another situation was the use of town premises to host a retirement party for convicted felon Joseph Arpaio. Many of us objected to that, once again, completely ignored. So I would sincerely ask you to search your conscience, is it really true that you feel your only responsibility is to residents who you feel are part of your electoral base? Because that's not my understanding of what elected officials should be doing. Thank you.
Jean Michael Isaac, and then Michael Scott, the last speaker.
Jean Michael Isaac, Fountain Hills. I have three minutes to address a few points that have evolved over the past several years. These issues are the town's political culture of secrecy, misguided spending, the culture of cronyism, and faint-heartedness in doing what is best for this town. These issues have evolved because this town council is dominated by a majority who believe that operating in secret and concealing information, even from fellow council members, is the path to political power and success. The most recent example is the lagoon proposal. How did this evolve? Well, it evolved from a select few among you who crafted the idea and then sprung it on the rest of us. What input was there from others? None. Why were no other citizens involved to explore other options for the town? Because you didn't want their opinions. Why were no alternative ideas considered? Because they weren't your ideas. With all of their expertise, why did you not consult our highly-skilled town staff? Instead of a lagoon, why not a community pool as envisioned by the original Swaback Plan? Why not an observatory to capitalize on our town's recent designation as a dark-sky community? Why not a community performing arts center also mention the original Swaback Plan? Why not just fix our roads and other decaying infrastructure? Why? Because nobody spent $38,800 to study these ideas. Instead, that money is being spent for what appears to be the pet project of a few empowered members of this council. This council is good at spending the taxpayers' resources, but you also know the problem that is occurring right now in collecting what is owed to the town, specifically over $453,000 in overdue and unpaid development fees on the Park Place project. A select few of you are to blame for this situation. In your desire to put something, anything, on the avenue, you bent the rules and have pressured town staff. You sent a strong message that special treatment is the reward for someone who will fulfill your agenda and allow a few of you to claim political success for that project. I predict that it is credit you will get, but not the credit that you expect. You are responsible for the culture of cronyism and favoritism that has empowered some favored citizens to once again believe that with friends in high places, the rules do not apply to them. In biblical terms, you reap what you sow, you are now reaping the results of that culture of cronyism and favoritism that some of you have sown. You are the enablers for the problems that we now have. For those on this council who have sat silently in the shadows and allowed this to happen, it is time to step into the light. Do what is best for this town. You need to question your role and your path forward. If you do not, then the town that I and many others love will continue to suffer. I'd like to present a copy of the written set of my comments to Ms. Bender with the understanding and request that they be included in the official record of these proceedings when that record is finalized.
Michael Scott.
Yes, my name is Michael Scott, I'm a resident of Fountain Hills, and something recently came to my attention that has not seen the light of day. Park Place owes $453,611.29 since February. I want to try to understand why the construction hasn't been stopped to collect these fees. Thank goodness for the Freedom of Information Act to get this information, because I haven't heard a thing about it until recently. heard a thing about it until recently. I'd like you people to do due diligence on some of these issues, and I'd like some of them to see the light of day. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to our consent agenda. We have five items, and can I have a motion to approve as written?
Mayor, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll need a roll call vote for that.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Tollis?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you. Item six, consideration of a reimbursement agreement with Fire Rock Community Association Incorporated for reimbursement of public art funds to be expended in the amount of $143,555.86 on a public art project at the entrance of the Fire Rock Development on Shea Boulevard. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the item before you is the result of the town's public art program, which 1% of all commercial and multifamily-type projects are required to contribute 1% of the value of those construction costs. Toll Brothers constructed the townhomes in Fire Rock Parcel B and was obligated under that program to contribute $143,555.86. They have the option to contribute the money to the town, or they could go ahead and incorporate public art. In this case, the Public Art Committee had an interest in working with the homeowners' association or the community association at Fire Rock, and so Fire Rock is actually contributing close to half of this, excuse me, close to 100% of this money towards a public art feature that will be at the entrance of Fire Rock Development on Shea Boulevard. The item before you for your consideration is a reimbursement agreement. Our town attorney worked up an agreement to protect the town's interests so that ensure that the town will reimburse fully the amount of the money just towards the public art portion of the project. So I also believe the community association manager is here tonight. Yes, if you could just come up perhaps, and if there's any questions that might come up. But the bottom line is, is that this is going to be a project that the association will maintain. This will not be part of the municipal collection as we have a number of other projects, but the beauty of this one is that this public art project will be maintained by the Fire Rock Community Association. So with that, I'll turn it over to the community association manager.
Grady, just one quick question. Has the Public Art Committee approved this?
Good point, and thanks for reminding me. Yes, the Public Art Committee has been very, this has been vetted by the Public Art Committee, and the community association has worked very closely with the Public Art Committee and the chair as well on this. So, but this has gone through a formal approval process by the Public Art Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Stephanie Fee, I'm the community association manager for Fire Rock. This is a public art project that we have worked with Susan Thompson on, and I'm coming in on the tail end of it, so I'm just here to let you know that the association is committed to maintain this water feature and public art project at the entrance to the association and to make it public for a parking area for Shea, for anyone who wants to come view it close up. Here for any questions you may have.
Is there anything you'd like to say about the design? I notice it incorporates a lot of Native American in it.
It incorporates, and the designer couldn't be here tonight, but it does incorporate kind of a spiral, they're calling it the Desert Spiral with some carins that are bronzed on the ends of it, sort of in a nautilus formation, to give, and to keep it kind of quietly dark there, but yet draw attention to the area, using the native materials that are right there.
Questions from Council? Nick, was that?
Yeah, Mayor, I just have a quick question. I think the beautiful piece, and I think it's great that they'll be maintaining it moving forward, do we have any insurance or any protection to make sure that they spend all the money that's being reimbursed and that's allocated for public art on the actual feature? Do we get a statement after the fact, or any billing to show that they spent the amount of money that was supposed to be spent on public art, on art?
Yes, and I can actually turn that over to our town attorney, because he's built in a lot of safeguards in this agreement that protect the town.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember DePorter, the agreement is actually a take-down reimbursement based upon expenditures as they go along, so that they'll only be reimbursed portions of the expenditures as they happen, so that the project has to be completed before the reimbursement's complete.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Along those same lines, just as soon as you see the word reimbursement, why are we giving money back? We're giving, the money was collected to do projects such as this, and the money that you guys are going to spend on the project is like double what we're reimbursing. You can just elaborate that we're not giving money away?
Correct. This was money that was donated, as I understand it, from Toll Brothers to the town, that will be allocated towards the public art, the association's spending in excess of $250,000 to contribute to this as well.
Absolutely. Just wanted that on the record, that we're not giving money away. Thank you.
Any other council discussion on this item? No, not? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor, move to approve.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All right, any other council discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor, 7-0.
Consideration of terms and conditions related to the operations agreement between the town and the Chamber of Commerce for the visitor's center. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you'll recall that back in June, there was a discussion about the possibility of the town partnering with the Chamber of Commerce on a jointly operated visitor's center. This visitor's center would be located in the Park Place Development, it'd be about 300 square feet. As part of that, it will be right next to the new headquarters of the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, and as part of this arrangement, the facility or the visitor's center will be run and operated by the Chamber of Commerce. They will be having volunteers working in there as well. The town, in exchange for paying $30,000, they'll be responsible for the rent payment, the utilities, and the staffing of that. And just as an example, the first-year anticipated breakdown of that $30,000 is roughly $6,000 for utilities and maintenance, staffing would be approximately $20,000, and then there's some other items that the Chamber would be contributing, which would be the insurance, technology, furniture, $29,000, tenant improvements, about $35,000. So for the first-year anticipated cost would be approximately $90,000, of which the town would be on the hook for approximately $30,000. In your packet, we had a number of items that are tied to what we would consider to be terms and conditions to include in an operating agreement. The staff and I felt that this would be an easier way to go through it, and if the council had any issues or concerns with that tonight, then we'll finalize and bring back an agreement that has exactly what you like to see in the agreement at a later date. We're planning for the first or second meeting in September. We also have, our community services director is here, and she worked very closely with the executive director of the Chamber. We also have the Chamber Director as well as the Board of Directors, including the president, who are here in the audience, in case there's any other questions the council may have. With that, maybe Ms. Goodwin, if you could just come up to the podium if there's any questions that come up. The other thing I wanted to point out, which we really haven't had this discussion in the past, as the council and the public's probably aware, the Chamber has been operating a visitor's center in their current facility for a number of years. At one point, the town used to contribute, going back many, many years, I was able to get our finance director to come up with some numbers, but we used to contribute as much as $150,000 a year for the operation of the visitor's center. Very last year that we were in it, we were only in it for six months before we took over the tourism function, we contributed $51,000. But most of the numbers over the years since, we went back as far as 2005, they ranged anywhere between, on average, $100,000 to $150,000. And that was not only just for the operation of that, but it was also to pay the staff salaries that worked over there. And at some point back in 2013, 14, the council decided that they wanted to take over the operation, or I should say, the tourism function, so that we could have more control over that, and so we've been doing that ever since, as evidenced by the award we just recently received. The other thing I wanted to point out, you know, this came up, Councilmember Magazine and I met yesterday, and he had some questions generally about this item, and one of the things that, in addition to what I just revealed about the town's passport to the Chamber, is that most cities and towns across the valley and across the country, cities have membership dues that they pay to their Chamber, and since we broke away from not contributing towards the tourism function to the Chamber, the town has not been paying any membership dues at all, but we've been, the Chamber's been nice enough to grant discounts to, as if we're a member, to their various functions for town staff and council. A lot of the cities that do pay membership dues, they have what's called a membership agreement, and so under the membership agreement, in exchange for paying higher than normal membership dues, that, in exchange for that, the Chamber's agreeing typically to be involved in business attention and, excuse me, business attraction and retention, and also take on marketing and promoting tourism. So with that, I just thought I'd just bring that up, because that information was not available when the council last discussed this topic before you. With that, I'll go ahead and, Rachel, if you had anything else to add?
Rachel, just to clarify, this is the separate tourism area adjacent to the Chamber office, and I think that's the biggest misconception that I've been getting letters on, why are you funding their office? It's not. It is the section that is tourism, correct?
Correct. It'll be a designated space that is dedicated to, as a visitor's center and part of the tourism promotion.
And by us participating, this opens it up to have a representation of business, of all businesses, not just those that are Chamber members, correct?
Correct. The visitor's center portion will be dedicated to the tourism industry folks, member or non.
Okay, and we'll be able to have information about our events that are coming up, and they'll be staffing it, and they'll have all information about ExperienceFountainHills.org, our website?
Absolutely. The intention is to brand it with the Experience Fountain Hills logo and the look and the feel and all of the different efforts we've put behind that. We've been working with Scott to visualize what we can do with some of the dynamic photography that we have of the town to really show off visually what we have here, and then, like you said, promote the seasonal events that come in, and to make sure that folks have up-to-date resources on all the goings-ons, our restaurant guides, all those types of things.
Right, and just one more clarification, other questions that I were asked, this office would be open during the week and on weekends if there are events going on? It's not a Monday to Friday like the Chamber and closed on weekends, right?
Correct. The intention is, it's, you know, like you said, Monday through Friday, as well as Saturdays, and then Sundays, based on events?
Based on events that are happening.
Yep.
So if there's art on the avenue at the time, they would be open so that people coming in to visit could stop in and get further information about the town?
Absolutely, and we intend to work with Scott and kind of feel out how that goes. It may be seasonally based, based on demand, but we'll kind of work through that.
Okay, great. Questions? Yes, Councilman Tollis?
Thank you. When this first came up a few months ago, when we started discussing this, I had brought up my concern that it's closed on the weekends. So you just addressed the fact that you're going to be open on the weekends. I would like to personally see the ambassador program or something similar to that that you offer to business, businesses in town, realtors, insurance agents, whomever. If you have volunteers that are willing to staff the facility, even on Sundays, I would like to see this facility open as much as possible, and that it's promoted to have it open, and that you try to bring in volunteers in the business community, which could help their business, but also could market the town on the weekends, which I think is when people come to visit.
Absolutely. I think the intention is there to do that. The Chamber would be managing the volunteer aspect of it, but I don't want to speak for Scott, but I think that we can work to make that happen.
I'd like to see a commitment on that.
Okay, Councilman Yates?
Thank you. To remind everybody, and this is another example, a small town such as ours that has limited resources, we take full advantage of contract services, which is what this is. To pay, to get one employee for $30,000 plus benefits, et cetera, and expect an impact is near impossible. I will stand corrected, though, the $50,000 that we absorb for Rachel and Grace, you guys were able to leverage that. So that kind of creates a challenge for the Chamber to really leverage this and work together to take advantage of technology, take advantage of the cutting-edge, interactive things that we've been going on, and the biggest thing that we're looking for from the town aspect is that ROI, that return on investment. Use the metrics, use some numbers to show us that we're making an impact. I'm the biggest supporter of marketing and tourism, but we'd like to see something, but take full advantage. Councilman DePorter, I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but he's in that technological field of social media. There are some tremendous resources in this town that we need to take advantage of. So the challenge is on to you so that we can increase that budget as opposed to take it away.
That's why we hire younger people.
Exactly, exactly.
They're teaching us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other council discussion? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. As best as I recall, the way this was left was that we had requested to see a contract, an actual contract, and what I see in the packet is an open-ended discussion where we have a $30,000 agreement for one year, and after that, there's really an open-ended amount that isn't spoken for, and I'm not comfortable with that. You know, we used to fund the tourism section of the Chamber of Commerce, and we asked year after year after year for just a little evidence of a little return on the money, and all we really got was nothing. And I was part of the council when we brought the tourism into town, and thank goodness, we've got the staff that we've got, because they have now put us on the map, not on just the Arizona map, but nationally acclaimed map, and I tip my hat to that. Now, we have, we have a lobby on the avenue that is about 300 square feet, 282 square feet, that does absolutely nothing other than occupy space, takes up utilities, it has a great storefront. Right behind that, there is an area that is untouched, which is directly adjacent to the council chambers, that is approximately, I'm going to guess about 380, no, I'll bet it's closer to 600 square feet, that hasn't been, hasn't ever been built out, and we've talked about for years the possibility of actually moving tourism down into their own office space that would also open up onto the Avenue of the Fountains. And I personally, to make a long story short, I'm not in favor of funding it to the Chamber. I would rather take their money, I would... I would rather take her money, I would rather put it in her own Town Hall, have our own tourism, and, and, and just keep it all in-house, is what I would prefer to do. So that's my feelings on it.
Councilman Yates?
Mayor.
Uh... Councilman DePorter?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt you, Councilman Yates. I, I, I'm following in line with Councilman Brown here on this one as well. I just, I'm really struggling with the return on investment of a brick-and-mortar visitor center with a wall of brochures. I've been traveling incessantly, as many of you know, for the past months in my new job. And, you know, and I meet a lot of people on the planes, and I go a lot of places, and I've never once visited a visitor center for my sources of information for what's going on in any of the communities I've been in. We've moved so far past brochures on a wall into interactive displays with video screens and social media efforts, being more proactive. You know, $30,000 to me could be better spent if we kept it in-house and were able to create an environment that we had a little more control over, that we can set benchmark metrics against. I just don't, you know, again, the wall of brochures does not, does not wow me. And I don't think it works in this environment anymore. You're lucky if you stumble upon a place like that. If you're going to do something like that, I mean, you almost just need to build a kiosk or have something down at the fountain to make it really something that someone's going to stumble upon. I think the Chamber does fantastic work. I mean, we, we contribute, you know, to Grady's earlier point about not paying dues. One thing we do pay them is, you know, we close down a majority of the downtown area for over six days a year for the fair, which we all love, but we do do that for no charge to the Chamber. And I know for a fact that closing down streets and making that available for them is, is an expense that the town takes on because it's an important thing. So I think the Chamber should consider that when they're asking us for those kind of funds. I think they do good work, but, you know, I'm not seeing such a robust plan here and something, something so dynamic that I think writing a $30,000 check, it doesn't justify it in my book. Back it down.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you. Although we're all probably saying the same thing, we all want tourism, we all want economic development, it's about leveraging resources. Unlike what we're planning now, before, we just gave the Chamber 50 grand and there was nothing, there was no accountability, we just said, "Go do tourism." I think with Rachel and Grace and what we have going on, we do have a partnership that's, that started. We, we did some hard bids next door, and you know better than anyone what a TI would cost, but between 70 and 100,000 just to do a build-out, and that's without ADA compliance. You add that, and that's probably another 20, 30,000 dollars. I think this is the best way to leverage the resources. But again, the onus is on the Chamber of what are you going to do next year? I like the fact that it's an annual review that we can kind of get, a review of how did it go, how did you spend the money? That's the check and balance. But as far as the business model that we're talking about, we have a tourism department in-house, that they can now leverage their resources to another group exterior for 30,000 dollars. That's, that's money well-spent. Again, the challenge is on the Chamber, just let's see what you can do, and Grace, and Rachel, work with those guys and see what, what they come up with. I think this is a fantastic model. I'm all for building this space out and use it, quite frankly, for economic development, in my opinion, but I'm open to ideas from the Council. But the right here, right now, and the resources we have, strategic management is all about getting your resources, leveraging in such a way to get a competitive advantage. This is textbook, what we're doing here, contract of services, public-private sector partnership. I see no reason other than to Councilman Brown's point about, okay, but we don't really have a, a solid agreement. I like the idea better of leaving open ends so that you can address things without being finite and specifically naming, I want three interactive televisions, two apps done per year. Instead of that, just challenge the Chamber with, do tourism and do a good job. And if you don't, then we have this conversation a year from now, and we can, you know, look at it and say, "Guys, it didn't really work out," you know, and move forward. But again, I'm, I'm one vote, but I'm all for having the conversation.
Mayor and Council, if I may, just a couple points, and I've heard some really good ideas tonight. The one thing that we were trying to do, we were going to bring back an agreement. So for sure, the Council will be acting on agreement. We just wanted to have basically what I call the major points, you know, if there's anything that's a deal breaker or something, we wanted to hear from you tonight. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, the staff actually approached me about a year ago when we were looking at the town going alone with a new visitor center, we were looking at leased space. The staff actually approached me about this corner here downstairs. The concern I have is, from a safety and security standpoint, is that on weekends, the way that the bathrooms are configured, you'd have people coming into the Town Hall on after-hours and on weekends. And from a security standpoint, even though we locked down this building, I'm just concerned about theft and vandalism in this building after hours and on weekends, because it's not going to be monitored that closely. I realize we have on the ground floor, we have the Sheriff's Office in the corner over there, but they're not really staffed up on weekends for people to, to know that they're there. So that, we did look at this as an option, as an alternative as well, but the fact that we would have to, one of the things that you typically have with visitor centers is that people are looking for a comfort station, which is another word for bathroom. And the fact that you have to kind of go down a hallway, so that means that we have to open that door in the back of the building and make available the building, basically, that's a concern from a town manager perspective. But I, I do like the possibility of having in this building, I'm just not sure if it's not in this location, I don't see anywhere else that could be in this building.
Mayor.
Councilman Magazine.
I've heard everybody talk about $30,000, and I don't have any concern about $30,000. But I haven't heard anybody talk about the ongoing costs. At the last time we discussed this, we discussed around number of around $30,000 per year. It won't surprise anybody on the dais when I say that, and I've said this before, I've been opposed to a whole number of expenditures. Addition to the economic development staff, even though I came up with the idea, I think, of lights on the avenue, I've opposed it. Path to the park, I oppose it. And I oppose it because we had our Head of Finance come before us and tell us that based upon a study, that over the next 20 years, we're going to find ourselves in a financial hole, a shortfall, if you will, of over $6 million a year. At the time, I think I was able to show that it's going to be more than that, but be that as a may, $6 million is still enough. I don't see how we can continue to spend when we're facing that kind of a fiscal future. It really troubles me. And with regard to, you know, building out space and so on, okay, so Councilman Yates said 70 to 100,000 dollars, that is three or four years of 30,000 a year. Three or four years. So it's still a heck of a lot cheaper to go ahead and do that than to come up with at least 30,000 per year for the visitor center. I hear the town manager, he's clearly thought it through. My preference would be to have him go back and take a good, hard look at that situation and come up with specifics. What would it take? We can make it happen. Question is, how do you make it happen? I think that's a far better idea. And I, and I should say, I admire the Chamber, I'm a member of the Chamber, I'm in both of their art shows, so I help their budget. And I really, and I'm a member of a committee, and I really think the Chamber does a very good job. My big concern is the cost. We are in a hole. We're in a deep hole, and we're digging it deeper and deeper and deeper, and something has to be done about it.
Can I just hold Council discussion so we can get the public in, because I think we have speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have four cards.
Okay.
Mike Archambeau, followed by Scott Soldat Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Magazine, and Councilmembers. Mike Archambeau, Fountain Hills resident, 45 years now. Dennis, you're right. We spent $151,000 a year, and the mayor knows this because she was on the Chamber, for tourism. Now we're spending it in-house on Rachel and Gracie. So it's a little bit disingenuous to think that, well, we were spending $151,000, but now we're not. So let's talk about the visitor center. $30,000 a year. Now, I thought it was 500 square feet, but evidently it's 300 square feet. That's $2,500 a month for 300 square feet. That comes out to a little over $88 a square foot per month for 300 square feet. Don't be fooled into the staffing costs. The Chamber's going to staff the facility whether you rent that space or not. Now, I've sat here and watched you guys sit up there at budget meetings, challenging staff on answers that you get for questions because you don't like what they said. It doesn't fit your neat little agenda. You make statements like, "Well, we always seem to have money at the end of the year," yet you're telling us we have a deficit. It sends the wrong message. More importantly, it's disingenuous. Statements like that are used only to further your pet projects without vetting. You have surpluses because staff foregoes hiring an empty position or puts off infrastructure repairs. Listen to staff when they tell you that you have a revenue, that you need a revenue source. They're the professionals, they're the ones that you're paying for. Their opinion is unbiased, yours is. If you want to go down the path of visitor center and this ongoing cost, one of the things I learned in many years that I was on the Council was identify a revenue source. Don't take it from revenue you've already got, because all you're going to wind up doing is digging yourself in a hole. Since I left the Council, new councils have continued to spend money that they don't have. You need to stop it. You're using our needs as a credit card, and pretty soon, the payment's going to come due. And it's coming due quickly. Thank you, Mayor.
Can we, we don't allow clapping for either side, whether you agree or disagree, okay? So let's just keep it respectful and not clap. Thanks.
Bo James is next.
Um, I, did you have a question for me? I'm going to go to Councilman Brown first.
I was going to clear up the square footage, Mike. I was insinuating that the front lobby of Town Hall is about 300 square feet. It is my understanding that the visitor center that is being offered by the, by the Chamber is 500 square feet. That's a little misinterpretation.
And I, you know, we can have the executive director, because in my mind, I'm thinking it's 300, but it perhaps is 500, so I do apologize.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Scott?
Good evening. Scott Soldat Valenzuela, CEO of the Fountain Hills Chamber, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Couple of things about this visitor center. It is correct, it's 500 square feet, it will have a bathroom that's accessible to the public, easy to find, easy to get to. One thing that has not been considered is, I don't really believe people will walk the length of the avenue to get here, to talk to anyone. One of the values of having a visitor center that's kind of in the heart of the, of the new avenue, is that it will be in a, an easy-to-access location. And I think that that's really key. We've placed it as close as possible to the corner so that that access will be available. It will be closed off from the Chamber so that people can come in and out on the weekends without disrupting anything else. We can close the Chamber down if we need to, but that visitor center can still continue to be open and staffed. Couple other things that may not have been considered, and I think this goes to Councilmember DePorter's comments, people do still go to Chambers looking for visitor information. It may be a particular demographic or particular age range of people that do, but they show up at the Chamber, as difficult as we are to find today, looking for information and wanting to talk to a local about the best place to go for, fill in the blank, restaurant, the best dry cleaner in town, where do I get, you know, information? And, and that's a key thing that volunteers who live here and are active in this community can tell them about hiking trails and other things that you might find online, you might find great information, but you can't talk to a person online in the same way that you can if you come into the visitor center. As far as the numbers go in the visitor center, you can debate the numbers, you can count the square feet of the rent, and you can do all of that, but it doesn't take into consideration all of the other aspects of running and operation, which is the volunteer staff, is the paid staff, is the technology, is the weekend hours that you're asking for. And my last question to you is this, and I say it very respectfully, if you were going to open a visitor center in Town Hall, why haven't you done it already? It's been discussed and discussed, and Town Hall's been here for quite a few years, and it's never happened. So I respectfully request the opportunity to have one year to demonstrate to you that we will do a phenomenal job of running a visitor center in the heart of the new avenue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Bo James, followed by Amber Lee Dubrowski.
Mayor, Vice Member of Councilmembers, I'm Bo James, I live here in Fountain Hills, and I don't have much to say besides, I support what Scott said, I think he said basically what I would say, and I am one of those who goes to visitor centers in towns. Thank you. And cities.
Thanks, Bo.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Amber Lee Dubrowski, I've been a resident of Fountain Hills for over five years now, and I want to just let Rachel and her team know that as a resident, I would be more than happy to be an ambassador of our beautiful town of Fountain Hills. I will volunteer at least once a month, guaranteed, and I'll bring my little twins with me, because I want to be a potential face, along with others, of what our town is and what it can be, and I want to take part in that. So I, I'm all for a visitor center, I think it's very important for the community to have, and I just wanted to extend that to, to Rachel and her team. Thank you.
Get her name in contact.
We know where she lives.
All right. Are we done with the public? Okay. Councilman Legay?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it, and thank you Chamber and Chamber Board for being here this evening. I have a tremendous amount of history with the Chamber and our previous tourism contracts. What we paid in the past was for a tourism program, we subcontracted out our tourism program. Over the years, it evolved. I'm not sure that money was used for the visitor center. The visitor center was an integral part of the Chamber. And in terms of traveling, I agree, and I do a significant amount of traveling, and when I need to use a restroom, I look for Chamber of Commerce's. And, and nine out of 10 times, they are the visitor center. So I'm, I'm kind of asking, why is this Chamber not our visitor center? In that, the models I have seen is the Chamber is the visitor center with the brochures and so forth and so on. I'm kind of tracking with what Councilman DePorter said about moving in the 21st century in virtual tourism and in technology. We have spent a significant amount of money developing an economic development program as well as a tourism program. The folks working in both of those areas are doing a tremendous job. They do a significant amount of reach, outreach, and in since they've been here, our, how would you say, numbers of tourism, tourists have increased significantly. So I feel that it is the role of a Chamber of Commerce to have a visitor center, and I don't think we need to subsidize, if you may, a visitor center. I question whether we need a visitor center as a town, given how advanced our tourism program is in the direction it's moving. So with respect to this agenda item, I, we had a discussion during our retreat regarding this, and it really didn't go anywhere, and all of a sudden, it appeared on the agenda. So if we're going to continue to discuss a brick-and-mortar visitor center, I really think we need to go back to the drawing board and look at additional options, if you may, or, or alternatives. And just to cap off my comments, we did not budget in FY '17 and '18 for a visitor center. We did not budget for this expenditure, and I think that we need to noodle it, noodle on it a little more, and perhaps think about if brick-and-mortar is where we need to be. And in closing, I believe it is the responsibility, in my experience, that visitor centers are an integral part of Chamber of Commerce's and their house there, and that has been the model in this town for a number of years. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Tollis?
A couple of comments. First of all, we were on the board for the Chamber of Commerce when the town and Chamber had an incredible relationship, and at that
had an incredible relationship, and at that time, we had Mark McDermott, who had previously been the chairman of the State of Arizona's Tourism Board. And while he was running that program, we had incredible synergy with the Fort MacDowell Tribe. We were able to market in the airports. We were recognized as one of the top 10 communities in the country. We had a lot of recognition, and it went a long way, having somebody that experienced. Couple of points that you had made in regards to the budgeting. It indicates that it is budgeted on our sheet here, or it says yes in the budgeted item?
No. We had attempted to go through the budget process, and the council went ahead and took it out of the budget, but we have identified a source that could fund this.
So it's coming from some other?
Contingents.
Okay. I would like to, at this time, move with the Chamber and support them in this role. We're not going to have, and I agree, we should have a good visitor center. We're not going to be able to achieve that in the next year. I agree with Councilman Yates that for $30,000, you could easily expend that on increases in salaries and benefits and things of that nature and trying to find someone for $30,000 that's experienced. We've just, there's awards recognized for us. Mike Archambeau comes up as a former council member. He says we should listen to staff. Well, we have staff asking us to do this. So when you have staff that's asking us to do this and is recognizing that this is a need and he feels we should move forward, it's contradictory to have someone come up here and tell us we should listen to staff when we do have staff. We have our town manager who's doing a fantastic job in trying to build a very good synergy with our Chamber of Commerce. So I would support moving it forward with this for the first year and put some, put some goals out there and make sure we achieve the first-year objectives so that we can see if it's worth it for the following year.
Did you have something else? Councilman Yates?
Was that a motion, Art?
Not a formal motion. I'm just making my position.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad some of the words have been said during some of these presentations or input. We follow a strategic plan. We follow a vision plan. All these things that we talk about fit into those plans. There are no pet projects. There's no concept that someone says, "Oh, let's just do that." It has to fall in line before we'll even get time on the dais or time to meet about it. In the vision plan, in the strategic plan, in the downtown plan, specifies leveraging resources, tourism, business attraction. These are all things, I mean, specific, not vague. This is specific. Leveraging resources to do this, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, this is perfect. Again, this fits our model. If we want to go down the path of, well, let's lower the quality of life, let's start, we could save $250,000 by closing the fountain. We had an agreement on the consent agenda for electrical services on the pumps. It's another $130,000. Some big chunk items. We can get rid of all the benches. We can close all the sidewalks. We can, there's so many things we could do to cut. But our job as a council member, council, is to provide quality of life to the residents. And the quality of life we're providing is what the residents have stated they want in the vision plan, in the downtown plan, in the strategic plan that we had, I'm sorry, I'm on my soapbox, but basically, I'm saying here, $30,000, it fits in our plan to, Councilman Tollis's point, the staff has asked us to do this. This fits right in line. My only two cents I would add to the list of things is to provide metrics and an impact study of some of the things. But along those lines, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we accept this to put into an agreement, so we'll have one more pass at it so we can look at it.
Okay. The motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Council discussion on the motion. Councilman Magazine.
Mayor, I'd like to move a substitute motion. Inadvertently, I think Councilman Yates sort of made my point for me when we talk about turning off the fountain and doing all these other things and getting rid of the benches and so on, because we're headed in that direction. We really are. We're headed in that direction. I want to move that, it's a two-part motion. One, that staff take a look at the space behind us and determine the approximate cost of fitting it out, finishing it, and the likely annual operating costs of doing that. Secondly, to look at the area, the reception area here in Town Hall with the same issues. What might it cost to fit it out as a tourism center? I mean, as a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Visitors.
Yes. As well as the operating cost, and come back to us with that information.
Okay. That's some motion or an amended?
No, it's a substitute motion.
Point of order. You'd have to, we have to draw the first one.
Mayor, members of the council, our procedures don't allow for the two to be in play unless the second one is amending the first.
Unless it was amended.
And so it seems to be that that's a complete substitution. That's not exactly the way the rules are written.
Are they different than Robert's rules?
They are, actually.
Because that's Robert's rules.
What we typically would do is vote up or down the first motion, then take the second motion after the first motion's been acted on.
Okay. So we're in discussion right now on the amendment. And I, before this was even brought up about going in partnership with the Chamber, we did look at that space because EDC was looking at it. We were looking at it as a combo with tourism, and we did get some numbers on it. And I guess the numbers were so high that we dropped the whole idea, especially the access to the restroom facilities, that we would have to actually somehow either block the whole building from there or we would have to actually build bathrooms. And then it became so expensive that the whole thing was just thrown out. So staff did look at that, okay? So that's why when the Chamber offer came up, it seemed like an alternative. It was not only, you know, the location, your way down the end. I mean, if you can have something yourself, it's always preferable to have something because it's solely under your control, but, you know, the numbers were so high that it just, you know, wasn't something that was feasible.
Mayor, I don't doubt what you're saying. I, for one, would like to see some specifics. You may be absolutely correct, but I'd like to see some specifics about what it would cost to solve the problems that our town manager has outlined about using those spaces so we can get a better sense as to what the cost would be.
Well, I think Grady has those numbers, but not right now, right? We, you had some of those numbers for retrofitting that?
We had the renovation or outfitting this, but not with restaurants. We didn't even go down that path with the restaurants.
But we did have the renovations.
We did.
And those were high.
Mm-hmm. Seventy to $100,000 was?
Seventy to $100,000 just for renovations, not including?
Without fixtures and?
Without fixtures, without staff and all that.
As I said previously, if we're paying the Chamber $30,000 a year, the question is your advertiser over a number of years. Let's see whether it's worth it.
Councilman Legay?
Mayor, I believe we have a motion on the table. I'd like to call a question, please.
All right. And we have a motion. So Councilman DePorter, you still with us?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and we're going to do a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Nay.
Councilmember Tollis?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
Councilmember Mag, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Magazine?
Nay.
Councilmember Legay?
Nay.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor failed. Three to four.
Mayor.
Okay. Council, Vice Mayor?
I'd like to restate my motion, if I may, and that is have staff take a look at the space behind us, give us specific information, numbers and so on. I mean, 70 to 130,000 is quite a range. So I'd like specific numbers as to what it would cost to build it out, what the annual operating costs are likely to be, electricity and so on. And the same thing for the area outside the Chambers for a visitor center. What it would cost, design, what would we do there? What would it look like? What would it contain? What would it cost and what might be the operating cost? I'm not sure that this is going to be outrageous. I mean, I have no idea, but I would like to see some hard numbers.
Mayor?
I got a motion on the floor. Do I get a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Tollis?
It costs money to do research and evaluations like that. Do we go outside for contracting services or do we try to have someone on staff design this? What would you recommend, Ellen? And is there an item, a budget item of where the money's going to come to them to do this? And if we need bathrooms, what's the threshold for your acceptance of building something? Like what?
I can't?
Okay. I guess there's some clarification on your motion, please?
Sure. I can't begin to tell you what I'm willing to spend until I see what it is and compare what's being, with what's being offered, number one.
How much on plans?
Excuse me. Number two, when I say plans, I'm not talking about hiring architects to do some fancy plans with color charts and all the rest. I'm sure the staff can make a presentation as to the kinds of things we would do out there or in the back room. We don't need to spend any money at all.
Well, let me go to Grady on that. Do you feel that the staff, I think before, there was someone who did come in who looked at it?
There was a firm that actually came in and just gave us some estimates based on the site visit when they came in. We didn't get into things like bathrooms and all that, but they could certainly look at the plumbing lines and where they are and see where that might be. Again, you got to be careful because you don't want to build expectations that this person's going to get the contract to do something, you know, when we have a competitive process. But we'll, I think with the information that I'm hearing tonight, I think we have the means to find a way to get the answers out as better being requested tonight.
Okay. And we were also, and we, you did it again, huh? And we were also talking about access, putting a door in also.
Correct.
Did you, did you want, did you want to say this?
No.
Okay.
Someone has to have.
Hey, we've got a builder here. Maybe we could?
Well, I already have a note from the builder that says?
I can recall when?
Can I read it? I mean, this is the commit? "I will do this free."
Does that mean build it too?
You never know.
This is not the first time, so, thank you.
That's great.
Councilman Brown? All right. So there's a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote on that?
Councilmember Tollis?
Aye.
Councilmember Liz Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor, seven zero.
Now, if Dennis said he would do it for free before we had that conversation, my vote would have been totally different.
We would have been home by now, okay?
Just get it out there.
All right. That's great. All right. Now, let's go on to consideration of Resolution 2017-28, the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the Town of Fountain Hills and the Americana Development and Building Company LLC, case number DA 2016-01.1. Grady and Bob?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our Development Services Director, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Grady. Thank you, Mayor.
Bob?
The current development agreement approving the Copper Ridge project was approved almost exactly a year ago, August 18th, 2016. Since that time, a number of issues arose that caused some delays in starting the project. Those issues have been resolved, and the applicants are now eager to get started. Tonight's request is for council's approval of three small amendments to the development agreement as follows. First, the current agreement requires that the property be acquired within 230 days of approval. That's passed. They did receive an administrative approval of an extension until the end of this month. The applicants are requesting that the deadline be extended to 450 days so that that can cover their lost year and to allow them time to close on the property now that they're ready to begin. Second, the current agreement defines Phase 1 of the project as being the senior.
Could I, excuse me a second? Could I ask everyone who wants to leave to leave? And please do it quietly so we can go on with the rest of the meeting? Thank you. Okay. Because we have this televised and people are trying to watch and hear, so, go ahead, Bob.
Right?
Thank you. We don't want to miss a word of what Bob says.
Back to the second. The second agreement, the current agreement defines Phase 1 of the project as the senior apartments. Phase 2 is the assisted living, memory care, and medical rehab building, and Phase 3A and 3B are the two commercial properties. The applicants request that the project's phasing be redefined to allow them to build any of the residential buildings first as Phase 1 according to the market conditions. Phase 2 would then consist of the remaining residential building, and Phase 3 would still be the same, the two commercial buildings. And lastly, the applicants have requested some minor modifications to the language regarding any future assignment of the agreement to the property owner, and any such assignment would still require council's consent. Staff recommends that council approve this First Amendment to the Development Agreement with Americana Development for the Copper Ridge project, as I just presented. Thank you.
All right. Let's start with questions for Bob. Council questions for Bob?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
This may be more legal question for the record. There's no substantial changes to this whatsoever, other than the market condition of which phase is starting and the dates of starting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Council discussion on this? Councilman DePorter? Anything?
No. No, no, Mayor.
Okay. Then I'm looking for a motion.
So moved, as presented?
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay. That was, that was good. Okay. Council direction to staff? I think we already did that with?
Yes.
The?
Ms. Lawrence.
With Ms. Lawrence, and you will take care of that. Okay. And recent activities? I got a couple of things to say, so you can pack up as long as you listen. I, this is interesting. I attended the opening of the Stone View Pharmacy, right here in town. Dr. Zachary Hanks is the pharmacist, and he presents his business as an old-fashioned pharmacy where the pharmacist knows his customers and provides old-fashioned personal care. If interested, Stone View is located in the medical building on Palisades. I had lunch with our friends who each year bring us the Kite Festival. The Pakistani information and cultural organization held their 17th lunch. I've been going to this for many years with Senator Kavanaugh, even before I became mayor. They always mention Fountain Park and how much they love the venue for the Kite Festival. They mentioned Fountain Hills in all of their tourism outreach, and we are also featured on their calendar, which goes out to all of their members, and it goes overseas, and we are March. If you get, they always send me a copy of their calendar, and March, you know how there's always a picture? It's always a picture of the Kite Festival, and it says Fountain Park, and we get a tremendous amount of publicity from that. It's really incredible how the word gets out. Our River of Time Museum held its annual fundraiser, and it was incredible night with exciting bidding, with Senator Kavanaugh as the auctioneer again. Putting this event on takes many months and a lot of volunteer hours, so I'm glad that they were very successful, and I want to thank all of them for their hard work in making our museum a success. And lastly, but not least, it's back to school time, so you know what that means. Please, slow down. Watch out for the kids riding bikes, walking to school, getting on the school buses. Please be patient. Please be patient. I mean, it's, sometimes you can't believe that you have to say these things, but, you know, the law says when you see a school bus and those red lights are on, you have to stop. It's going to be a couple of seconds out of your life, but it means a big difference. You know how kids dart across the street. We're asking all the residents from the council, please obey the speed laws, especially those in the school zones. Our deputies show no tolerance for speeding at all, even one mile over the speed limit in the school zones. So that's your only warning. Please don't contact me and say, Mayor, can you fix my ticket? I was in the school zone. I was only two miles over, because the answer is, you should have known better, okay? So everybody, please, let's slow down. Generally, it would be nice if everybody slowed down anyway, wouldn't it? I mean, we're a nice, small town. Let's just enjoy the view and enjoy Fountain Hills and keep all of our residents safe. So that is all we have for today, unless someone else has something else. If not, I'll get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.